Barnes from First Baptist Church. And if you would please stand for verification and remain standing for pledge allegiance immediately, follow me.
Ask if you bow for a word of prayer, please.
Father God, we come before you tonight. We thank you for this opportunity to serve you and serve the community. We ask that you would bless these leaders, Lord. We know that each and every decision made affects others, and we know that our decisions can either hurt or help those that you have put us in authority over. And so, we just thank you for the position, the privilege, but also, Lord, we ask for you to partner your wisdom with ours. There are many times where we do not know the right thing to do, and we just look to you for those answers. We ask you to partner us with those other wisdom we need, but also, Lord, that we would think before we act that we would take everybody into consideration. And, Lord, may you guide us in a way that would be good for all. It's in Jesus' name we ask you to bless us in this way. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Marty.
Here.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Harry.
Here.
Here.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval minutes of the regular council meeting of March 10th, 2022, the finance committee meeting of March 10th, 2022, the public utilities committee meeting of March 14th, 2022, and strategic planning committee meeting of March 16th, 2022. Do we have any edits, additions, submissions? I'm hearing none. Those statements approved. Next, we have audience participation tonight. We have an invited guest, Dr. Dingus and Mr. Conley from the LEDC and CBB. If you guys would please approach the podium, give us our quarterly update.
Thank you for inviting us. Let me, Marty Conley, who is going to be with me, Marty is also on the school board in his hometown, and they're hiring a new principal. So, he is, you can only imagine, he's got, doing very important work right now and couldn't be unable. So, I shared, I would cover some of his report as well. But we try to bring you on an economic development for the city and for the region, and things are moving quite well economically. First, I'll touch on Marty's. He's got numerous projects going, heavily working on the Freedom Trail types of concepts in the county, in Ironton, going up the DTNI. That was really a major thing. People don't realize the impact during the, you know, during the times when the slays would cross over. The DTNI was a direct shot north, and you could follow that, and it was, so it's a major pass. So, we're working a lot with that. We've got a grant out, and we believe that there will be some support for trying to emphasize that. In addition to that, we're doing a lot with the Wayne National Forest. They've become a strong partner, just brought in a new ranger, and in turn, he seemed to be heavily involved in tourism, so that is, that is moving quite well. Things that's happened in the last, brought in a few months, was the, was car shows coming to Ironton and helping with the other projects there, and just little things of that nature and trying to get more in the, in the social media, doing a lot of outreach, trying to bring bus tours in. Hotels, when they built the last hotel, they put where they could park up to three buses if need be, which we didn't have with the holiday. And so, that's a tremendous way to bring people in, and we keep talking about riverfront opportunities and so on. Everything you take, you know, is pretty big to get into, but there's, Marty's working with a lot of great things, active with the Ironton Alive and some of the other groups. So, but on economic development, and we do see tourism as a, as part of economic development. And I was so pleased yesterday, I hope all of you had a chance to, to watch the state of the state with Governor Dewine, and he openly embraced tourism as, as a, really a generator. You know, the whole idea of manufacturing is to bring dollars from other parts of the country or the world into your community through building products and sending them. The same's true with travel and tourism. It, it brings other dollars from other communities into your community. So, that is, that was embraced. The other things that he covered well, let me say, the big shadowing thing over the whole bit was Appalachia, and he made an unbelievable commitment throughout his speech. And it wasn't only broadband, it was in the travel tourism, but more importantly, it was in manufacturing, it was in quality of life, it was in mental health. He made a, a major commitment and was asking the legislature to put money behind it. So, I do, in downtown, urban, urban downtown revitalization, it's just all the things that, that small-town America in Ohio has not always had opportunities with. And so, he made a request that the legislature to do, to make a major effort, and I do understand that there will be some great things happening that will bring direct benefits to Ironton and to Lawrence County. So, that as well. The biggest thing in the state, of course, one of the biggest, is INTEL and the $20 billion investment in the east of Columbus area that's being made. And you asked, how does that affect us? Well, they're going to hire roughly 7,000 people with the average salary of $135,000, average. Now, how does that affect us? Well, you have to realize Columbus has thousands of small companies that are doing well. They're growing and developing, and they need to expand. Well, they're going to have a tough time expanding in that community. They're going to lose a lot of the key employees there when you have these types of salaries being offered. If they, they don't bring, unemployed people don't take $135,000 jobs. So, this is going to be a tremendous shock to the whole Franklin County. Our thing is much like engineer profiles, a new company we just brought in, the Dow Park. It is a, it's a, where you, it's plastics, where you do the actual formatting of the molding for construction equipment, where they can shoot foam into it, bring the different kinds, extrude the foam into it, other types of colors. They've, they basically haven't, they cannot catch up on work, and they started out with 65 employees, and they used the same salary schedule as you're using in Columbus. They didn't try to cheapen Appalachia, which I really applauded them for it, and they've gotten, they've been able to engage huge numbers of employees. And I see that same thing falling through with other central Ohio-based companies that want to expand, they don't want to leave Ohio, but they want to get into a different labor pool. And we offer a tremendous labor pool with the Huntington National Ironton Market. You know, in Lawrence County, 75% of our residents work outside of the county, 65% of our jobs are field people from outside of Lawrence County. So, truly, we can brag about having 340,000 to 375,000 residents, you know, in an arm's length area. So, I see that as something that I, I feel extremely positive about. I think that's one that's going to, going to give us some chances that we haven't always had. So, and I think we need to direct market after those particular businesses. Also, I mentioned engineer profiles, but we have the new company, Pure Cycle. They're putting in over $300 million here also down at the Dow Park, and it is going extremely well, starting out about 75 employees. They thought they could get by with 60, and now they're up to 75. So, it's, it's, they'll be hiring those over the next few months. Of course, the marijuana harvest grow, the growing facility, they're hiring. We have numbers of places that are hiring, and we're finding it difficult to get employees. It is, you don't realize what our businesses are suffering, is to get, get quality employees that'll show up to work every day. It's got a work ethic. It's a different, it's a different group. So, our businesses are, but I lie to the companies in Columbus, say, our people are great, you know. So, we, but realistically, as a whole, I do think that our people are good, and I do think we have a lot of people who, who deserve a much better job and so on. So, I think things will be good. That's kind of the main things that I see, and I, you know, I could cover all the other kinds of things, but, you know, the, there will be broadband money, it's for innovation in Ironton that you wanted in broadband, there will be a lot of additional money for broadband. There's a capital bill that's being put together, and I'm hearing all these kinds of particular funds. But, but the biggest thing I've seen was the governor's remarks yesterday, and I feel for our region, it is, it is, it's first-class, so I felt good about that. Be glad to answer it, Bob.
Yeah, I've got a question for you. It seems like one of the biggest issues that we're facing here in Ironton now is the location of the new jail. We're all getting letters, calls, and I had two different ones that stuck my mind. One of them was asking about the horse park up here next to the state garage. Of course, the other one is the mountain property. So, is there any looking at those as a possible place to build a new jail?
From LEDC standpoint, anything that we have control of would be made available to any need of the city or the county. You know, if it, if it's, those, those properties, you know, anytime you deal with reclaimed properties that have industrial things, there's, you never say it's permissible until you do an awful lot of research, but, but, you know, I can assure you and anyone in the county that whatever we can do to help government and county, city, we'll do whatever's necessary to help. So, I, the answer is that, that, you know, that I would, I would, before I make any commitments, I'd want to make sure that consultants said it was, was usable, because most of these, an interesting thing with all of these properties, they go through cleanup, is to go pull their deeds and see all these restrictions, and it really is, it's an attorney's nightmare sometimes, because the consultants put so many things into it so that the consultants will have to be brought back in to do more work, to examine, to see if it can be done. That is, that is the issue that with reclaimed property, we're always cautious about. But, but there again, I'll assure you and everyone in the county that any property, any property that Lawrence, that LEDC has control of, that is needed for county purposes or city purposes, we'll figure a way to, on our part, to make it happen. Or, and, and try to find other parcels as well. You know, it's, I think we've got a lot of hidden opportunities working together to do this, or sections of town that we would like to change the face of and some areas. So, there may be some opportunities, just looking for, for that, Bob.
Yeah, well, my thoughts are, I want to keep the jail within the city limits. I think it's very important with the, of course, with their tax structure and everything else, if they move to the other end of the county or Cole Grove or something, then we probably lose quite a bit of money from that.
I, I don't know how much there's really, that I've never actually had a pencil. I, I do think that we need to build more stream revenue for the city. I think we need to work heavily on, on, you know, residential. I, I still believe that Ironton is a loved community for people living. People don't leave Ironton upset. I mean, they come here and they, they want to come back when they grow up, when they go away, they have children. We're always wanting to come back, looking for higher-end housing and so on. So, I do think as a, as a joint effort of the council, of commission, of the city, of everyone, we do need to really concentrate how we can make more residential opportunities for, you know, in the city. But, yeah, anything we can do on that, we would be glad to, glad to do. Any others?
Well, and I appreciate you.
It's, it's a, you know, I see it as a partnership. I spent decades at the university, and it was a partnership through all that, and the successes there was because of the, the partnerships. And Bob, you know how many things we've worked together to do, and those things don't happen. Mac even helped us make money by teaching the classes for us. So, we, it takes, it takes all of us to make things happen, and, you know, and I'll, you know, I will assure you that our, our board and myself and all of our employees are, are part of your team. So, thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Dr. Dingus.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Now, we're going into the regular audience participation. If you'd like to communicate any concerns or communications with council, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and we will have five minutes on the clock.
My name is Mary Williams. I live at 2505 South Fifth Street in Ironton, Ohio. Good evening, city council members, Mayor Cramblett and guests. Before I begin, I am asking all of you and all of us here to take a deep breath, a few deep breaths, to please relax and open your ears to an open mind and a compassionate heart to what I am going to say. Again, my name is Mary Williams. I live at 2505 South Fifth Street in Ironton. I have lived in that, in that neighborhood my entire life. I am here today speaking on behalf of myself and my immediate neighborhood. I have some good news to share with you all, and I have some bad news to share. I'll start with the good news first. Myself, along with my immediate neighbors, are on board with getting a new jail facility. This in itself will open up many opportunities for our small town. What I and my neighbors adamantly oppose is the old Lombard School property on Lorraine and Clinton Streets being the host for our new jail, because it is right in the middle of our neighborhood. You may be thinking, she lives five blocks down from that property. I consider it my immediate neighborhood. I went to kindergarten in that building. When my older two grandchildren were small, we walked to the playground located on that property to play. I know for a fact, it is still used by the kids in the neighborhood to play basketball, ride their skateboards, swing, and just have space to play. At one time, it was handicap accessible, so those in wheelchairs could swing. I am here to speak directly in regards to mine and my neighbors opposing that particular location. There is a large amount of open property on South Third Street from Bind to Ash to Beulah on the riverside that can accommodate this new facility. Or, I've got the perfect spot, located across from the ODOT garage on Commerce Drive where the horse arena is. Or, I feel certain that you all and our county commissioners know of other available properties. Myself and my neighbors are requesting the Lombard School property be removed immediately as a potential jail location. I know what you're thinking. Well, I'm not a mind reader, but I know what you're thinking right at this particular moment. The county and the city are two different entities, and we have no say in what the county commissioners do. Well, you better have a say in this particular matter, because if Lombard is not removed and our new jail facility is built there, it will have a catastrophic effect on our neighborhood as well as the rest of our little facility, our little city. A facility of this scale is a huge deal. Our new jail will be here forever, at least for the rest of us here in this, this room, this evening's lifetime. Your town, and especially my, our neighborhood, and even more so, the citizens that live from Clinton to Lorraine Streets, from Fourth to Fifth, to include Sanctuary Nursing Home, need to know that you, you all, are on our side and not wanting to build on the Lombard School property. You men and lady were taught, just like I was, for things to work for the greater good, we all must work together. I am making a plea to you this evening that you ask our county commissioners to make it part of their daily task to either get the deed to the Commerce Drive property cleared up and let get every, let's get everyone focused to a new site, or keep on them to find another property ASAP. Now, for the bad news. If Lombard is not immediately removed as a potential site, myself, along with my neighbors, will launch a campaign vehemently against the sales tax increase. What I and my neighbors mean is immediately is for the Lombard property to be taken off the table as a potential jail site and another or other locations be listed by March 31st. Time is of the essence in this matter. The primary election will be here before we know it. People make things happen quick and on a short notice all the time. I am not here to debate or defend or criticize anything. I honestly understand why the commissioners chose Lombard site.
Your time is up. I would say somebody has a comment or some consideration for your comments. Anybody? One thing that I would like to definitely let you know, that your, your voice and your neighbors' voices have been heard. We hear you. I promise you, we hear you. We've been working very hard, extremely hard, to find solutions to this, to this issue. We've invited county commissioners to previous meetings. We've actually invited them here tonight. It was said through the mayor from Commissioner Holiday that she was worried about sunshine while I was coming to a meeting with more than one and didn't feel appropriate to...
Make a commitment.
Make a commitment with one commissioner there. Just through conversations, I haven't heard anybody say that they really want the jail there on this council. So, we have brainstormed, we went through sessions, we went through, you know, just back and forth, looking at maps, looking at zoning maps, what can we do to, to work with the county commissioners on relocating this place? Because like, like Mr. Clary said, we want to keep this in, in town, but we want to keep it out of our neighborhoods. So, I, I want to reassure you that your voices are heard, and we are doing it. We're working very hard to get this issue resolved to your guys' convenience, and we don't want to put a jail in our neighborhood. I can promise you that. Craig?
Mary, I'll, I'll ask Chris. Chris has the dude as the chair, but we've, we've politely asked the commissioners to come, but if they're afraid of sunshine laws, he could call a joint meeting with the Ironton City Council and the Lawrence County Commissioners, and we'll see if they show up. But, that's been our frustration as well.
Well, if, if my neighbor, Ms. Bethany Young, she wanted to speak but is too nervous, may I, may she give me her time? I've got more to say.
Is it my turn?
I'll make that motion.
Jacob, you've got a motion?
I'll say it.
Say it. I'll favor it. Bye. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. I am not here to debate or defend or criticize anything. I honestly understand why the commissioners chose the Lombard site. They already own that property. Makes absolute good sense from an investment standpoint, makes absolute no sense to us to place it directly into our neighborhood. My main focus for speaking this evening is to get the Lombard property immediately taken off of the smorgasbord of potential jail sites. My biggest concern right at this very moment is that the sales tax increase will pass and the Lombard property will be host to our new county-wide jail facility. Those within my close circle of friends and family are telling me the sales tax increase will not pass. Myself and my neighborhood, we can't take that chance. The voters in the eastern part of our county, and even the voters in the opposite end of our town, are clueless and could care less about the location being in the middle of our neighborhood. All they know is that we have needed a new jail for many years. They will vote in favor of it, because they now see the opportunity and will seize the moment. With a show of hands, who in attendance here this evening would like to view our new jail facility from your front, side, or back door? Sanctuary Nursing Home located across Clinton Street from the Lombard property is mandated by Governor Dewine to keep their facility doors unlocked. Well over 150 people reside there who are prescribed and take powerful narcotics, and those folks could potentially have 200 new neighbors who, for whatever reason, could wander off from their new home to help themselves to the Sanctuary Nursing Home medicine cabinet. I know wherever the new jail facility is located, there is always the tip potential for an inmate to wander off, but for God's sakes, let's not entice them with homes and a nursing home within a stone's throw. I spoke with a neighbor of mine this afternoon who lives on the South Fifth, who lives on South Fifth Street, who has been incarcerated even at the federal level. My neighbor looked me directly in the eyes and said, "I don't want it on the old Lombard School property. No one wants it in the middle of their neighborhood." He went on to say that when a person is in jail, all you have is time, time to think about how and when am I going to get out of here? And how can I get my girlfriend, my mom, or my visitor to smuggle in the drug of my choice? He said, "Better yet, they'll just cut that tennis ball in two, shove some drugs up in there, and toss that thing over the fence while the inmates are out there on their yard time." He told me without flinching that a 200-bed jail facility will bring with it a whole host of negative. He said it does not belong in a neighborhood that is surrounded by people's homes, let alone a nursing home. I am here to ask your kind consideration on this matter. I thank you for your attention. Have a good evening.
Chris?
Mary, thanks for coming out tonight. When we, when we talked yesterday, you were, you were equally passionate as you are tonight. And one of the things that was left resounding to me was how the folks on the north end would feel if the West Ironton School property was in consideration to having prison, or having a county jail. I, I think to, to Council President's point and to Craig Harvey's point, nobody really wants it in a neighborhood. We, we all absolutely get it. Bob brought it up when Dr. Dingus was talking, because it is the hot-button issue right now with May 3rd looming. I, I know, after speaking to Chris Haney, he's driven around town looking at locations. I've driven around town. One possible location that I saw is adjacent to Bob's business, the Big Blue Warehouse that's there on the other side of the railroad tracks. I have no idea if that's Brownfield. I don't know what that place was at one point, but I think it's important that the, the group of citizens that you are representing here, I think it's important that you guys understand that we absolutely want what's best for the, the city of Ironton. That's keeping the jail in town, certainly, but preserving neighborhoods, communities. You know, so, please understand, I think I speak for everybody here. We, we appreciate you showing up, representing. Mayor Cramblett and I had a conversation yesterday about the very thing that Craig Harvey alluded to, if, if need be, having some sort of a, a formal town hall that council president... If, if need be, having some sort of a, a formal town hall that Council President would call a special meeting, we would invite the, the commissioners and that would, in my opinion, be the best way to diffuse so much of the bad information. I think I mentioned to you, I was at the grocery store and somebody cornered me on this very issue. Wasn't rude at all, but he just, you know, was throwing all kinds of things at me and the majority of what he was saying, it wasn't factual. So I think, you know, if, if things don't progress quickly enough, you know, that's certainly an option that the mayor, you know, is, is on board with. President Haney is on board with having it at a neutral site, at the high school, at the university, someplace where people can actually show up and ask questions, be given answers to, and we can dispel all of the bad information that's out there so people understand the legitimate issues that are, that are in place. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, I physically walk the Lombard area and, and the Horse Park. And in my opinion, the Horse Park would be a much more suitable place. It, it would get my endorsement as, as the preferred place. I do want that facility in Ironton.
We get that, yes.
But, but in my opinion, I think that Horse Park area, it would be a much better place. So just wanted to let you know that.
I appreciate that.
Craig?
I was on the thing, just a man who gave to Mary, but it wasn't, because I was ignoring you mean me, I'd never do that to you. It was to look at the Lawrence County Commissioners' schedule and their schedule of events does not have anything for Monday.
How, I wasn't one to speak. They are, they have something scheduled Tuesday at 1:00 PM. That's exactly what you guys are talking about. They asked me to sit in and represent for...
But unless it's a joint meeting, Sam, we can't, three of us could not kind of, I mean...
As private citizens.
But we could, not to discuss business.
Right.
It, so we couldn't do that. So Monday or Tuesday...
Tuesday at 1:00.
We could, I mean, the majority of us up here work, but I mean, I'll take a lunch break Tuesday if I want to, but call a, call a joint meeting and get with them and see if, if they can do a joint meeting, but their calendar events does not list anything for Monday.
I'm sorry. Sam, did you say they have their thing Tuesday?
Tuesday at 1:00. They'll have some more details here soon. And just as we spoke the other day, I'm working tired asleep with it right now to try and help get the stuff cleaned up, also looking at all these, you know, they picked that site. It was the only piece of property they owned in the city that was viable and they had to put this application together very quickly to get that $16 million grant. But it was the preferred meeting that it was open still, but this is the preferred site because it was the only site they owned that was viable to fit the needs and the blueprints and the studies that they, for what that new jail standards will require. But we are working really hard on trying to relocate it.
Can you submit a request to move Tuesday's meeting to evening hours?
If you guys are calling a joint meeting, you guys will have to call it.
Well, I mean, if they're going to be there too, I'd rather them be there, truthfully, because we can call Monday if they show up, but if they're going to have a meeting Tuesday, can we go ahead and request?
I, I can't speak with their behalf.
Okay. Well, then we'll just go ahead and call Monday, 6 o'clock, go for everybody? Six?
What about?
Joint meeting?
Chris, what about Tuesday on their, if we keep their schedule?
Well, like Craig said, most of us up here, the majority of us work those hours. So I wouldn't be able to do it either.
Okay, I will.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I can make myself a bed.
We probably just need them to work out those logistics.
We have, does everybody want Monday evening?
I'd call it and then the ones...
Call Monday evening.
The ones that, if they don't show up, the ones that are not working or are able to make that, do it on our behalf.
Sure.
Okay. We'll do it.
Does that have to be a motion?
No. No, we'll just call them. Joint, Count, Ironton City Council, Lawrence County Commissioners, meeting for Monday, the...
28th.
28th, 6 o'clock, Council Chambers. Or do you want to, I don't know if we can get the range right here, Council Chambers. So we, I promise, Mrs. Williams, we are, we're working for a solution very hard. So we will call that meeting, expand the joint meeting, Ironton City Council, Lawrence County Commissioners, Monday, the 28th, 6 o'clock.
Here.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would that be up to the public?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Haney, just so that they know, how many times or how long have we had an open invitation?
I'll email them probably the last, this is the fourth meeting in a row, I believe.
We've had very little response.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
My name is Jim Torduff, 2738 South 11th Street. And the first thing, I didn't realize, I guess I would respectively ask you to maybe reconsider the five-minute limit. I really don't understand that. I'm sure you have reasons. I can understand it if people are being repetitious and you're just hearing the same thing, but a lot of people, this is their only time to come down and communicate with you if they work and if they're, if they are presenting themselves in a rational, productive manner. I don't really agree with the five-minute limit, but that's for another evening, I guess. The reason I came tonight, and I want you to know that I respect all of you. I've been in that seat and I know you guys got a tough, tough job, so I'm not here to criticize. I'm just here to legitimately get an update. When I left council over two years ago, we all seemed to be in agreement. Well, the finance director stood up one night and put us all on formal notice that the finances were going south, big time, and that something had to be done. And I think what you said at the time, John, was within a year. And we all agreed to start doing a five-year forecast. And that's a lot of extra work for John and I applaud him for that because that's something you're familiar with, Nate, being in a school setting. That's required by law and I think you all have started requiring him to do it rather than out of the goodness of his heart. But he does a good job with it. So I recently got a, I guess the most recent five-year forecast that John's done is the one in September, a few months ago. And there doesn't seem to be a whole lot that's changed in the two years since I left council. We're spending more than we bring in in the general fund, a substantial amount more. We're, we can do that because we're using our carryover, kind of like a husband and wife would use their savings. And I've talked with John and I realize, and I realized from working at the school, that COVID monies, that seems to be the only thing that's changed in the two years since I left was COVID monies has put a Band-Aid on the problem. But they are one-time monies, they're windfall monies and they're not going to last or be repetitive. So to me, the five-year forecast is showing that in the general fund, we're spending about a million dollars more a year than we're bringing in. And that by 2024, the general fund will be four and a half million dollars in the red, which it won't because Mac, being one of the authors of the charter, that's prohibited by the charter. You can't, negative spend. So as the reserves are depleted and it gets down to zero, something will have to be done. When I was on council and John did the five-year forecast, the initial one, and put us on official notice that things were going south, we held a meeting at the university. Everybody on council was in agreement, there had to be something done and we wanted to get input from the public. And several of us came up with plans so that in four or five years, the reserves wouldn't be depleted, that we would take a, we would be forced to take a look at current revenue covering current expenses without the carryover. So we would have a plan about how we're going to attack that projected four and a half million dollar deficit. And that's not counting. It's my understanding that the city has borrowed $2 million to do 70 blocks of street paving this spring or something. Is that accurate?
Jim, we took it, because as you know, the streets are in need of great repair.
Oh, without question.
Okay. So we have used permissive tax money that we have for license plate that we passed. There was three sets of that, $5 each. We use that money and that money is used to leverage for that bond. That's why it was agreed upon with that. That was almost two and a half million dollars for bridge and road repair. I'm hoping that we're going to be able to get...
I'm not, don't get me wrong.
So that, so that money, I mean, that money is available and, you know, we're not, we're not taking that from general fund to pay for that bond.
I'm not criticizing, yeah. I'm not criticizing the decision to pave streets at all. They're in horrible shape, like you said. It's just that things happen, like as we're all aware, the gas tax is going to be reduced, which is going to reduce the permissive tax, the license plate money, the gasoline tax.
Jim, the permissive tax is not going to be reduced.
Oh, it's not?
The permissive tax, that is for the license plate.
Well, what about the gas tax?
The gasoline tax is being debated and there's no for sure answer on that. So while they're talking about dropping the rate, the talk is, while they're talking about dropping the rate, while the, the cost of it is going up, the offset might not be as bad because it's the percentage of that sale.
Well, as I said, I'm not here to criticize the street paving. There's...
We're, we're, we're in dire need for infrastructure improvements.
Yeah.
So I'm going to make no apologies for passing a two and a half million dollar bond to pave our streets where they need it.
I'm not here to criticize that.
And, and we, we worked hard in coming up with creative ways and be able to do it.
Yeah.
And it's on the backs of our residents that are actually doing it. So...
The only thing I'm saying, and I'm, I'm sincere when I say I'm not criticizing that. I'm just saying that those monies were used for other things that now they won't be able to be used for. And I applaud you for earmarking something.
No, Jim, that's incorrect. Those monies were permissive tax monies that were passed at $5 a time. They were not used for other things. Permissive tax money has been earmarked for the last four years for street paving exclusively in a street paving fund. That fund has been building and the future revenues are going to be used to pay for that larger bond for a larger paving project. So those funds were never spent in the past. These are new funds that have been counted.
Not the immediate past. In past years they were.
I'm saying since 2017.
Yeah, I don't contest that. And I'm not, as, as I said, I'm, that's a whole different subject, the street paving. And there, there needs to be street paving. I, I agree with that 100%. But my purpose in being here is to say, I think we were all in agreement two years ago that the budget was going south, we're spending more than we're bringing in. We held a large meeting at Ohio University to try to get the public's input.
Mr. Torduff, I'm going to have to interject here. Your time is up, but I would like to mention a couple of things that, for one, when you approached the podium, you said that you did not think the five minutes was enough to address council. I know I do and I know a lot of these other guys do. They make themselves available and I get, I field phone calls every day from citizens, so I make myself widely available. If anybody has any concerns, I try to address them in a minute. Also, what you're not taking into account is, is we entered a cost savings program with ABM and that's going to save us millions over the next, what, 15, 20 years and we're actually going to benefit. So the spending is actually going to decrease in, in the numbers that you're saying. So you're not taking into account some of the things that have changed. You said nothing's changed, but there have been things that have changed.
The only thing I'm taking to account is what's in the five-year forecast. That's the only thing I can base anything on.
Jim, I can tell you, and I appreciate you coming up here, Jim, because you do have a lot of knowledge. You've been in city government for a long time and, and in school finance. So I appreciate that and I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you individually, one-on-one, about the budget and, and kind of review some of your concerns about that. So feel free to reach out to me. I'd be happy to do that.
Those things are good.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to have a work session with you and spend a half an hour just going through it and taking a look at it. I'd be happy, just please feel free to give me a call and we can do that. Before, before we move on, because I know we have some other people there, but I do want to address a few things. Our general fund is healthier and has been in the last five years. Yes, partially due to some reimbursement with CARES Act money, but we've had income tax revenue increase over the last, each of the last five years. Okay, so you can refer to John on that. And that's without raising the income tax rate. That is with growth. That is with more people either working or living in Ironton and working and creating higher incomes. So that's a good thing. Our general fund is as healthy as it's been in five years. As far as water, we consulted with RCAP, an outside consultant, to talk about rates and rate issues and come up with a game plan from outside independent sources that are, this is their major, water line replacement, water distribution, and improving our water system. We've consulted with them and we've, have come together and passed the CPI, okay? And that's addressing...
I saw that.
Increases, okay, in incremental times instead of whammying residents with large amounts and not addressing the issue over time. So we have come up with solutions for the long haul and strength of our community financially. And again, if you would ever want to talk to me about that or want to go through any of it, please feel free to reach out. I'm happy to discuss what we've done and go through our budget.
So basically you're saying the five-year forecast, when it shows the general fund's going to spend a million more than it brings in this year, next year, the following year, and the following year is just inaccurate, it hasn't been updated?
I feel, I feel when we come to our next five-year forecast, it's going to reflect different than the one that you have in your hand.
If you're not spending more than you're bringing in, then I applaud you. The only thing I had to go on was the five-year forecast, which looked the same as it did when I left two years ago.
Again, when John issues the next one, I'd be happy to sit down with you on it.
And I appreciate that. And don't get me wrong, I've been in your seat. I just, I just think if a citizen is conducting themselves in a rational, productive manner, I, I don't see why the limit, but that's...
Well, I mean, if we have, how many ever in here? You've been here before, one has been twice. If you, there have been time limits when I was there, you know, say in my case.
I'm not criticizing, it just never bothered me to do it.
Feel free to contact me. I'm, I'm wide open.
Well, and that's, and I appreciate that, but it's, but it's not the same as a dialogue and things come up with other people. I just, I'm, I'm not criticizing, I'm, I just, I don't understand it, but I'm old.
Well, if you go to the school board meeting, I think you get two million or three million. At least we're giving you two or three million more, Mr. Torduff. Appreciate it.
All right.
Anybody else would like to address council? Mayor?
I just need an executive session for real estate with John Elam, Bill Dingus, Rob Clark, and Ken.
Solicitor.
Solicitor.
No action followed.
No action followed.
Did you say one of those in regard to...
Real estate.
Sorry, I missed that.
All right, moving on to communications, I've already stated this. We've contacted county commissioners. The mayor did relay a message to us from Commissioner Holliday regarding her fears of the Sunshine Law. So Mayor, thank you for, for contacting and working with county commissioners on this issue. Appreciate that and like I said, we'll, we'll have to, hopefully they attend the joint meeting Monday at 6 o'clock. Moving on to reports, does anybody have any communication, by the way? No? Moving on to reports, there are none. Ordinances, Bob?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the adoption of ordinance 2210 from our last meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion, Bob? I'm second. Chris, roll call please, morning.
Clary?
This is for motion.
This is for the, this is for the reconsider.
This is, I want your motion in a second to reconsider that. So this is the vote, or this is the vote?
My vote is no.
Haney?
Oh, hang on, hang on. This, you want to reconsider, this is the vote, yes, to reconsider, no, to keep, keep the vote the same.
That's what was asked.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Harvey?
No.
Pop?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
So, yes, is this in, change there? So it's there, it's there?
No. I'd like to make a motion reconsider the adoption of, um, twenty-two thirteen.
Second. Motion by Bob, second by Chris, roll call please, Marty. Discussion.
Just to be clear, that's regarding, um, CPI and the annual adjustment of fees based on the consumer price index of our-
That is, yeah, twenty-two thirteen, yes.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Cleary.
A little clarification on that. This, we go.
If you vote aye, you're voting to reconsider it and to kill it.
Okay, aye, yes.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
No.
Hawk.
Yes.
Klein.
No.
Harry.
Yes.
Pierce.
No.
Ordinances twenty-two ten and twenty-two thirteen have been reconsidered. Uh, on to ordinances, twenty-two fourteen, Marty, would you please give that first reading, by title only?
Authorizing the creation of Fund Five and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Wow.
Make a motion and give ordinance twenty-two fourteen, second, third reading by title only.
Second, Chris here, second by, motion by Bob, second by Chris, suspend rules, uh, roll call please, Marty.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Marty, would you please give ordinance twenty-two fourteen, second and third reading by title only?
Authorizing the creation of Fund Five and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing the creation of Fund Five and declaring an emergency, third reading.
David.
I'd like to make, mention that ordinance twenty-two fourteen received favorable recommendation from finance, um, and I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two fourteen.
Second. My math is in the, take one, Marty, motion by Jacob, take one, roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two fourteen has been adopted, moving on to ordinance twenty-two fifteen, Marty, would you please give that first read?
Ordinance establishing records retention program and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bow.
Make a motion that we give ordinance twenty-two fifteen, second, third read by title only.
Jacob.
I'll second that and make, mention that ordinance twenty-two fifteen also received favorable recommendation by finance.
Motion by Bob, second by Jacob, roll call please, Marty.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Marty, would you please give ordinance twenty-two fifteen, second and third reading by title only?
Ordinance establishing records retention program and declaring an emergency, second reading. Ordinance establishing records retention program and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bow.
Motion to adopt.
Jacob, second that.
Have a motion by Bob, second by Jacob, to adopt ordinance twenty-two fifteen, Marty, would you, roll call please?
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Moving on to resolutions, we have resolution number twenty-two ten, Marty, would you please give that reading? Twenty, oh, I'm sorry, twenty-two eleven, I'm sorry.
Resolution and declaration of official intent to enter into a lease purchase agreement, see a pass Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, let's correct.
Nothing, no one does a fair motion, that's failing.
I'm saying no motions and didn't receive an unfavorable recommendation from finance, and resolution twenty-two eleven dies for a lack of motion. Moving on to resolution twenty-two sixteen, would you please give that reading, Marty?
Authorization to file OTNR Clean Ohio Trails slash recreational trails grant application.
Craig.
A motion to pass resolution twenty-two sixteen and also mention it got favorable recommendation from finance.
I'll second Bob.
Yeah, I'll second that, motion to pass twenty-two sixteen.
Motion by Craig, second by Bob, please, roll call.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Moving on to resolution number twenty-two seventeen, please give that reading, Marty.
Authorization to file OTNR Clean Ohio Trails slash recreational trails grant application.
Craig.
Make a motion we pass resolution twenty-two seventeen.
Bow. Receive favorable recommendation. Bow.
Oh, second motion, yes.
Motion by Craig, second by Bob, roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
On a miscellaneous, if I have any miscellaneous, John, you'll receive the fifth word of financials. Make note that we're fit in the minutes to receive financials. I believe that's my motion. Sir. Motion.
Yeah.
Second move. Second, second by Mike, roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
All right, Nate?
Had a couple of things, um, mayor, um, any updates on demolition dollars from Lawrence County Land Bank?
They, it was just, it's been right about a month from that was submitted to the state.
Nothing back yet, any update on identifying a new public safety officer?
Uh, through the police department.
Yes.
Um, we've replaced the other position, which was, you know, the environmental compliance director, um, former FOP, looked at trying to keep the commission with the department, um, however, we have, we have two open A's of the police department right now, and we had civil service test, only one person show up, and right now it's just difficult finding people to fill those positions.
Okay, and one last thing, I got in touch with a zoning consulting firm, McBride Dale and Clarion in Cincinnati, have the contact for the lady for that, um, I'm going to pass that along to you, I'm going to ask maybe if you and Mr. Haney could coordinate a zoning workshop where she could call in or set up a one-on-one.
McBride Dale and what?
McBride Dale and Clarion. And, um, one of the local communities, she said that they, uh, work with was Hillsborough, Ohio, I don't know if you might be able to find a contact there as a reference to see their work. Thank you.
Craig.
I just, I just wanted to make a mention, um, that I'll continue to advocate for us to adjust our budget based on the cost of living and consumer price index. Last meeting, our, our legislation passed unanimously and for some reason tonight got reconsidered, and in the calendar year twenty-one, the cost of living by CPI was seven and a half percent, which now year-to-date is seven point nine percent. And so we're doing exactly what Nate just said we weren't going to do, we're going to go back ten years from now, whammy everyone with a ten-dollar increase rather than do it incrementally based on the cost of living. Inflations, the buzzword these days, and we're doing nothing about it.
Craig, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, and I will admit, that was thrown in there last minute, I didn't do enough homework on that. I personally, I wasn't, I wasn't comfortable with seven and a half percent. Now, I'm willing to work with you, and there's also, there's some funds that I don't know that need the CPI adjustment just right yet. So I'm willing to work with you however I can to make this happen, but I want to make it, I want to make it feasible for our, I don't, I mean, that's man, seven and a half percent and then compound on that, that's, that's big time, you know, and, and I agree with you, I, I agree that it needs to happen. And I will work with you however I can to come up with a solution that I, I can get bombed. Craig.
I just don't want to keep kicking the can down the road, I've said that, and so if there's a quote-unquote compromise and we say, let's do three percent, then we're just passing along four and a half percent to future council, because gasoline is, is going to be seven, is going to be seven and a half percent, or cost of living is going to be seven and a half percent, whether it's a enterprise fund, whether it's a general fund, whether it's cost, whether it's the electric, whether it's gas, whether it's postage, things don't stay the same when they increase. And, and I, I hear you, is, is it a big whammy? Hell, yeah, I don't want to pay four dollars a gallon for my gasoline, but I have to. And, and if you're a resident of Ironton, you got to pay for the city's operation, no matter how much the cost of living goes in.
I agree, I just think the timing, if, if, if this gas crisis didn't happen, whatever you want to call it, I think the number would be a little bit more feasible to, to, for me to get bombed, you know what I'm saying? I, I just think it's, it's not an appropriate time for it to happen, I should have done my homework and I apologize for that. Um, I should have read it over more than I did and I didn't.
I, I've said my piece and you all, I mean, you all are elected to, to represent the citizens and to do it in the way that you so choose. I, I think it's unfair to keep kicking the can down the road, and I've told you guys that, um, but I've said my piece, I'll, I'll let it go.
Sounds like a good strategic plan, me and me. Chris.
I, I wanted to chime in on this, Craig, um, my understanding is this is something that can be revisited soon. Uh, I, I, you know, and, and, I agree, I don't, I don't like the idea of kicking the can down the road either, um, but there's just so much hitting Americans right now as it is, Irontonians especially, you know, and I just feel like, uh, you know, if we could pump the brakes, um, you know, circle back to this, you know, in a couple of months, I, I would certainly feel better knowing that some things are leveling off before, you know, we talk about an increase, so just kind of wanted to give you my, my two cents on that.
Bye, y'all. Nate, do you have, also have an executive session?
Same.
About the same thing?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and make that motion if nobody else.
And we include council, mayor, solicitor, finance director.
Ralph, Ralph Klein.
Ralph Klein.
Dr. Dingus, did you say Dr. Dingus?
Ralph Klein, Dr. Dingus.
No action to follow, Nate.
No action to follow.
Second, you by, second by, motion by Nate, second by Craig, again, the executive session, no action to follow, roll call please, Marty.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for attending council meeting tonight, motion to be adjourned, executive session, motion to adjourn.